I'd like to know if Wayne County Commissioners are represented here today? Or the State of Michigan House of Representatives? Kwame Kenyatta, would you like to join us? Kwame Kenyatta has been elected, well, I shouldn't say he's been elected. He's almost been elected Wayne County Commissioner. There's just a matter of a formality November 6th at that general election for him to take that seat. Minister Reverend Wendell Anthony, would you stand? From Fellowship Chapel Church, and if you want to come shake the minister's hand, feel free to do so. And the President of Detroit Branch NAACP. Detroit is so honored to have a man of the stature of Minister Louis Farrakhan come in the halls of government. Government that is to serve the people. Now, the minister is a prophet of God. A prophet may say things you do not like to hear, but he say things that you need to hear for your survival and for you to find favor in the eyes of God. And we are so blessed to have such a spiritual man come to address us. I was going to be a proper hostess and allow the county and the state to present their resolutions, but because they are not here yet, and this is at their request, but because they are not here yet, I will present my resolution from City Council. And to tell you that the mayor Kwame Kilpatrick would be here, but he had a speaking engagement in Southville at 12 noon, which he could not break on such short notice, but he did meet with the minister and he sends his congratulations to City Council for hosting the minister. So I'll present this resolution at this time. This is a testimonial resolution signed by all of my colleagues and voted on today and will go down in the history of the City of Detroit City Council. Whereas Minister Louis Farrakhan will be visiting the City of Detroit October 8th through 10th, 2002. During this time, Minister Farrakhan will inform the citizens of the City of Detroit of his June-July 2002 Peace Initiative Tour throughout Africa and the Middle East. And whereas Minister Louis Farrakhan will address members of the Detroit City Council on October 9th, 2002, on the issues of the peace initiative and the pending threat of war with the nation of Iraq. And whereas Minister Louis Farrakhan has dedicated his life to speaking out against the injustices that permeate our society, his wisdom and insight continues to enlighten those citizens who are party to his company. The eloquence of his words and teaching is such that people worldwide have come to meteitize Minister Farrakhan as a true prophet of Allah. And whereas a man of strength and unconditional faith, Minister Farrakhan organized the Million Man March held October 17th, 1995 in Washington DC, where he addressed the crowd of over 1 million African-American men from across the country. And the largest group was from Detroit, Michigan. And whereas Minister Farrakhan through his peace initiative has brought to the forefront the inequities of the United States of America's foreign policy, through his determination, faith, and commitment, Minister Farrakhan speaks out when many choose silence as a means of correcting the gross injustices throughout the world. Now therefore be it resolved, the Detroit City Council welcomes Minister Louis Farrakhan to the City of Detroit to speak on his peace initiative. The City Council commends Minister Farrakhan for his outstanding leadership and commitment to ensuring equality and peace throughout the world. And before I turn it over to the minister, there has never been a march in Washington as great and large as the Million Man March. Minister Farrakhan, this is Paul Taylor and Michael from the Million Man Alumni. Paul Taylor is the Director of Inner City Subcenter, a nonprofit group that serves the needs of people on the east side. They have never stopped meeting since 1995. They meet, they meet every Thursday at Inner City Subcenter on Iroquois and Forest on the corner at 7 o'clock. And the men who committed themselves should come. They feed the people, they take care of the children and educate the children, they serve the community. And you men who gave that pledge, would everyone who attended that march please stand? I want, I want. Let's hear you say it. Long live the spirit of the Million Man March!
Long live the spirit of the Million Man March!
Long live the spirit of the Million Man March! And this October 16th, as we do every year since the march, we have the Holy Day of Atonement, of Atonement Anniversary. This year, the theme is "The Spirit Lives." It will be Wednesday, October 16th, that's the anniversary date of the Spirit of Detroit. It will take place at the St. Regis Hotel from 6 to 10:00. And Joanne Watson will have it on TV, Wake Up Detroit, from 8:00 to 10:00 AM. But 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, the speakers will be Dr. Conrad Worrell, Kwame Kenyatta, Yours Truly Councilwoman Barbara Rose Collins, and Joanne Watson of Wake Up Detroit. I hope to see you all there and all of the men who were there. You made a pledge. You're only as good as your word. Please show up Thursday at 7:00 at the Inner City Subcenter so that you can renew your faith and commitment, because we, the African-American women of America salute you and we were so proud of you that day, and we don't want you to forget that. So without further ado, I turn the mic over to the Honorable Minister Louis Farrakhan.
In the name of Allah the Benevolent, the Merciful, we give Him praise and thanks for His mercy and His goodness to the human family. The greatest of God's mercies is that He sends into the world prophets and messengers to bring to the people divine revelation that may guide them from the error of their ways into the path of His favor. We thank Him for Moses and the Torah. We thank Him for Jesus and the Gospel. We thank Him for Muhammad and the Quran. Peace be upon these worthy servants of Allah. I am a student of the most honorable Elijah Muhammad, and I could never thank Allah enough for His intervention in our affairs in this city, raising up from among the masses of black people in a place called Black Bottom. Seventy-one years ago, a man named Elijah, and he gave that man the name Muhammad. And that man became my teacher and leader. And if I lived to be a thousand, I could never thank God enough for that man, because it is He who is my teacher, it is He who is my example, and it is He who has set the bar so high for me to strive to be a good man and a good brother and a good friend to those who suffer. I greet all of you with the greeting words of peace. We say it in the Arabic language, Assalamu Alaikum. To Sister Barbara Rose Collins, Councilwoman, to the esteemed members of the Detroit City Council, to President Mahaffey, to the distinguished brothers and sisters of Detroit who are here, members of the clergy, political and civic leaders. Words are inadequate to express the honor that I feel at Sister Barbara Rose Collins' invitation to me to address the Detroit City Council. This has never happened in my life before, that I, a man who has been called so many ugly names, would be invited to such a high place as the Detroit City Council chambers. If I were to be judged by the names that I'm called, then it is unworthy for me to be here and unworthy for you to be here to listen to what I might have to say. But I am in good company, because some of the greatest minds that have walked among us have been evil spoken of, not because they were evil, but because they spoke a truth that uncovered the deceit of the leadership. Moses was not an enemy of Pharaoh, though he was perceived as such. Jesus was not an enemy of Caesar, but he was perceived as such. But both Moses and Jesus, and Muhammad as well, were hated without a cause. Today, when you say Jesus, the whole world says, "What a wonderful man." But if you had lived during the time of Jesus, the only way you would have known His goodness was to have met Peter, or James, or John, or Mark, or Luke. Because the authorities of that day felt threatened by a man preaching a kingdom that had not yet come into existence, but people were flocking to his preaching of that kingdom. Dear Sister Barbara, I don't consider myself a prophet of God. That's a big, big title. God knows best who and what I am, but I do know that God allowed my mother to give birth to me, that my life on this earth may make a difference. God has put in my heart love for Him. And from a child, I knew Him. From a child, I felt His presence with me. As I grew more and more to see the hypocrisy of religion, those who preach Jesus but practice satanic ways. I was hurt as a child, seeing the suffering of black Christians from white Christians. And so I began searching for an answer. I would ask my pastor, who taught me about how God raised Moses for the children of Israel, and God raised Daniel for the Hebrews in Babylon, and God always sent deliverers. And I asked my Sunday School teacher and my pastor, was there not somebody for us? I didn't quite get the right answer. I know that Jesus is for us, but those who represented Him didn't seem like they were for us. So one day, I heard Elijah Muhammad, and a few days later, I heard Malcolm X, and I decided, I'm going to be a Muslim. It was not that I wanted to abandon Jesus, but I wanted to be a part of something that would make a difference in the lives of black people. I am honored today to be at the Detroit City Council, because Master Farad Muhammad, who came to Detroit and got the nation of Islam started, he knew that one day we would rise to be as we are. I'm delighted to be here with a black mayor and a city council dominated by black men Now mind you, I deplore racism, but I'm overjoyed to see my own leading government. And as I had a talk with Mayor Kilpatrick this morning, I said to my brother, who is 32 years old and just so full of life and vigor and desire to do good, I said, "Mr. Mayor, as a young man, the problems of government are overwhelming, especially at a time like this. But Mr. Mayor, if you keep your hand in the hand of God, stay close, then He will augment your wisdom with His unequal wisdom. And what seemed impossible to others will be quite possible to you, because we can do all things through Christ," the book says, "which strengtheneth me." So as I look at you all, I rejoice, because I see the future now, like Joseph, who was sold into slavery by his own brothers, but ultimately became a master in the land where he was sold as a slave. I don't know God's plan for allowing us to suffer as we have suffered, but the Scripture says, "I have not tried you with silver and gold; I have tried you in the furnace of affliction." And this furnace of affliction called the United States of America, and the racist ideas of those in power have always stretched the bar when we were competing. But when we got over that bar, they stretched it higher. And when we got over that bar, they stretched it higher until they could not jump anymore, but we were still jumping. And so, and so I thank God for racism and white supremacy, because white supremacy demanded more of us than we would have demanded of ourselves. So ready or not, America, here we come. I used to hate this country. I have to speak truth. I didn't hate the land, the land was beautiful, but I hated it by the way it treated our people. I never suffered what I used to read about as a child, so when I was able to go to college, I asked my mother, "Send me in the South, because I want to feel what my brothers and sisters have been feeling there all their lives." And so I went south to study. And when I saw that I couldn't go to church, in a white church, except that I sat in the balcony, and I couldn't go to a movie unless I sat in the balcony, and when I went to the courthouse to relieve myself, I had to go into a double basement to go to toilet. And there was a group of women around the toilet, because there was no door on the toilet, so they were protecting the female that was using the toilet. In Virginia, I wanted to eat, but I couldn't eat where other people ate. I had to go around the back next to the stench of a toilet and put my hand through a half-moon window and receive a burger. And I asked myself, "Why did my friends die in Korea? Why did my friends die fighting for something that I and we had never experienced?" So I don't apologize for my pain, but I have grown out of pain. I have grown out of bitterness. I have grown even out of hatred, because I know those are impediments to the manifestation of the Word of God. But I know now that I am blessed to live in America. In spite of her shortcomings, there's not another nation on the earth that is like her. In spite of the negatives, I know that if I spoke as I speak in Africa, in most of the countries, I would have been shot outright. If I spoke like this in Muslim countries, I would have been shot outright. But at least in America, the founding fathers who didn't consider us framed a document with words that one day would be the salvation of this nation. And as long as men are able and women are able to speak truth to power, maybe we can turn power in a better direction. So I thank the framers of the Constitution for saying, "We, the people." I know you didn't mean us, but since us is here now, and since we is the people. So we're going to accept our responsibility now. We feel that this is ours, and we've paid a price, a bigger price than the Bush family, a bigger price than the Cheney and Rumsfeld family, a bigger price than the Wolfowitzes and the Pearls and those who are guiding this government. We were here when they weren't. We were suffering when they weren't. We were bleeding and dying when they weren't, so don't tell us we got somewhere else to go. This is ours. We claim it, and we're sick and tired of seeing it misrepresented, run by those who are immature, run by those whose money puts them in power, but who don't have the good in their heart for the people. So, in the few moments that I have left, what does democracy mean to me and this peace initiative? The founding fathers of this country lived in Europe, and they saw the era of government. They experienced it, so they wanted to frame a constitution that would guard this nation against those things that they suffered in Europe. They did a pretty good job in what they wrote. In a democracy where people have the right to choose their leaders, people lead with the consent of the governed, that means they are not our masters, that means they are our servants. You've eaten out, and you know when somebody is serving you well, when they come to the table, nasty, and say, "What do you want?" You say, "Well, that's a bad servant there." Either you get up and walk out, or you make sure at the end of the evening, they get Since we, the people, are the masters, and those in government are our servants, then how do you take the nation from the people and put it in the hands of the so-called servant, where the so-called servant becomes the master and the people become the slaves of the few, rather than the masters of the few? How does that happen? I never told my mother what I wanted for dinner. I never told her I'll be in at such and such a time. She told me where to sleep and what to sleep in. She prepared my garments for the next day. I had not the right She prepared my garments for the next day. I had not the right of choice. She chose for me. There was no such thing as shopping for Christmas or Easter, and I chose my clothes. She said, "You would look nice in this, son." And when the style in haircuts was a strange look called a pompadour, where you had all this hair up in the front, my mother said, "Not here, son." When the style was pegged pants, where the hair were wide at the knee and narrow at the ankle, my mother said, "Not here, son." I would never have been able to walk with my jeans down on my backside. I would, I would never have been able to tell my mother to pay $150 for a Nike sneaker. Whether it's Boo Boo or Fat Farm. My mother had a style for me. And she says, "Son, when you're old enough to bring some money in here, then you can decide what you wear. But until then..." Now, what was she doing? She was putting in me a sense of values so that when I was old enough to make choices on my own, I would make the right choices. Because all we are in life is the result of what we choose and the consequences or reward of our choices. Now, when you have a democracy, which is the highest form of government that we know now, that presupposes an enlightened electorate. I'm going to say that again. Democracy presupposes an enlightened electorate, where you, the electors of those whom you will elect, have a knowledge of what is in your best interest. You are so enlightened, so intelligent, that you know not to choose somebody because they have slick ads on TV. But the question is, what do you propose that fits what I believe is good for my neighborhood? My ward? My city? My state? My nation? How can democracy be saved when the electorate is being, I would say, absolutely planned? Dumming. Dumming down the children. Dumming down the electorate. Corporate America taking over newspapers, radio, television, managing what you see, what you hear, controlling even how you think. So that the human masses are like sheep, easily led in the wrong direction. So, brother, could you move that camera? I can't see my esteemed brother, the Reverend Anthony there. I'd like to... Could you mind?
Minister? He's one of them from up here, up here?
Yeah, Reverend Anthony, you don't belong down here. He's a great soldier.
Yes, he is.
One that I greatly admire. Now, my dear brothers and sisters, why am I saying this? Because the country is being taken from the people. And it is owned lock, stock, and barrel by a few to the detriment of the many. This is why there's such a thing as campaign finance reform. Because corporate America spends billions of dollars buying the vote of those who have been elected to serve the people. Now, you don't know what the mayor is going to face. And maybe he didn't know either. But once you sit in these seats, you see from a different perspective. We come to these seats innocent, desiring to serve, and then we run into the forces that we didn't even know existed. And then the forces try to shape us so that we will vote the way that is better for them, even if it's detrimental to our own constituents. Now, look. In my mind, if we want America to survive, we have to take back the government and make it a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. Having said that, look at the people that make up this nation. There's not another nation on the earth like this one. If you go to China, you will expect everybody in government is Chinese. Because that's all China. Go to India, everybody Indian. Go to Japan, everybody Japanese. But when you come here, the whole world lives inside America. She has done fairly well in trying to make everybody feel like they belong. Except a few. And have always had a little trouble trying to belong. The Irish had trouble coming. The Italians had trouble. The Jews had trouble. Everybody that came from Europe had trouble in their beginnings. The Irish got out of it. Italians got out of it. The Jews got out of it. Not that there's no trouble, but whatever trouble it is, they can manage it. But we still in trouble. Still trying to manage. So we need a special kind of knowledge. The scripture says, "My people are destroyed for the lack of knowledge." So the greatest gift to people is not a Cadillac car, although that would help General Motors in the slump. Or a Lincoln. That would help Ford. But the greatest gift to us would be somebody who could fill our heads with greater knowledge. And with that knowledge, we then could take control of ourselves and our destiny, and then take back control of government. Now, since the whole world lives here and all of us have helped to make America the number-one superpower and the greatest economic and military power on earth, all of us did that. Her culture is ours. And the culture that has come from black people has really captured the world. It's a little degenerate. Some of it is a lot degenerate. But all you have to do is raise people's minds, raise their sights, and the culture will express the level and condition of their thinking. To me, American policy domestic should reflect the people that made her great. And American foreign policy should reflect her respect for all the peoples of the earth that helped make America great. The masses of the people know nothing about foreign policy. The masses of the people only know we elect our representatives in government. But then there's a secret kind of government that works quietly but very effectively, formulating how America will deal with the nations of the earth in our name. Now, you want to know why people hate America? Why people would be so blinded by their hatred that they would commandeer an airplane, driving it into the World Trade Towers, knowing that they would die and the innocent people on that plane would die? And the innocent people in the World Trade Center would die? What kind of hatred is that, that is so blinded a human being? It's not that they hate our freedoms. Everybody wants to be free. But what they hate are policies that the American people know nothing about, that rob... Listen, listen. That robbed the peoples of the earth of their wealth. And their wealth is exploited to make life better for us over here at the expense of people over there. This is unjust. So, our president now is desirous of a preemptive strike on Iraq. Because he says to us that they have weapons of mass destruction and their hatred for us is such that they will turn these weapons loose on us. And we don't need to see a smoking gun. We have to watch out for that mushroom cloud. Americans, news people, are in Baghdad right now, testing the mood of the people. Nobody harming them. As an American, when I went there, they always have treated me in that part of the world as a head of state. You should see the way your brother is treated in your name. They meet me at the airport with screaming sirens, phalanx of motorcycles and police cars. And they drive me everywhere I go and make sure that I am protected. They sleep in rooms next to me with machine guns because we carry no weapons. There's no hatred for the American people. Their hatred is for the policies of our government. And for the President of the United States to say, "We are the friend of the Iraqi people," after you have deliberately kept sanctions on them for 12 years, killing nearly 2 million of them after the war is over. How can you say you're their friend when they... You dropped... America dropped dirty bombs on Iraq. I visited the hospitals. I saw the malnourished children. And I saw that these hospitals were death camps because they didn't have sufficient medicine. Yes, they got a food for oil, for food and medicine program. But I was there. I saw with my eyes what America and the UN is not doing for the people of Iraq. You don't see this. All you see is what they allow you to see to govern your thoughts and your minds. So let me bring this to a conclusion. The Congressional Black Caucus is speaking with one voice. Don't do this. I went to the Middle East and talked to many African, I mean Arab and Muslim heads of state. They all told me, even those that have agreements with America and Israel and have favor with America, they said they didn't want America to do this to Iraq. I asked them to speak with one voice. Don't threaten America, but speak with one voice. Say to the President of the United States, "We do not wish for you to do this." And one by one, they began to speak to our president, saying, "No to war." "No to war." But our president and his advisers seemed to say, "No to them." I warned him in a letter that I wrote back last December. I told him, "If you go through this, you will lose the coalition in your war on terror. Your allies will turn against you." Europe says, "No, America, don't do this." Turkey, who is a friend of America, says, "I'm your friend, but President Bush, don't do this." Kuwait hasn't said, "Yes, do this." Neither has Saudi Arabia. Neither have the Emirates. All of the Arabs spoke at the Arab League with one voice and said, "No." But America says, "We're not going to let the Security Council tell us when, when we should protect ourselves." Now notice how we do this. See, we as black people, we understand how racist minds work. They always have to justify their wickedness. So they lie and say, "We had a gun." When they shoot us down, then they find the gun and put it on us. And wait. They don't change. The principle is still the same. When you want to do evil, you got to justify your evil by making the other fellow look bad. Are you saying fair conduct Saddam Hussein is not a dictator? I don't know nothing about their government. It's a fascist socialist government. What is socialism? But is this a dictatorship? See how you dictate? You dictate with skill here. See, marketing experts know when you go in the supermarket that you're going to pick up a certain brand. They understand the art of subliminal suggestion. They know how to use the 24th frame in media so that they can condition your mind. And when the, when there's an intermission, they know you're going to the Coke machine or the Pepsi machine because they programmed you to act like a fool. You think you are making the choices, but others are making choices for you, making you think that you made the choice. In closing, in Africa today, in Zimbabwe, I visited there. President Mugabe was a gentleman for 20 years. Before that, he was a terrorist because he was fighting Ian Smith for the liberation of the land. When he and Joshua and Cuomo and the freedom fighters, male and female, were beating Ian Smith and the army, they sent for them to come to Lancaster House in Great Britain. And when they went to Lancaster House, the British, in their arrogance, said, "All right. You, you pay for the land and we will give it up." Now, they were about to lose everything. Now, they were about to lose everything. So they wanted to bargain with the Zimbabwe Freedom Fighters that you pay for the land. And the Freedom Fighters said, "No, we were fighting to free the land. If you want the land, the settlers, to get some money, you put it up." And Britain said she would, and America said she would help Britain. They did it for a while, and they renamed. All the time, Mugabe was in the Commonwealth. He's loved, he's respected by Europe and America. You never read about him in the Detroit News. When he was Mr. Goodfellow. But the moment one of the soldiers said, "Look, man, we fought for the land, and for 20 years, we've been deprived of what we fought for. We're going to settle on the land. We're going to take the land." Then it forced Mugabe to decide, "Oh, my God, they're right. They fought for this. We don't want to take it all back from the whites, but they can't have it all." 4,500 white people owning 12 million hectares of land, and a hectare is 2.7 acres. That can't be. So now he's taking the land back. He's a bad fellow now. He's awful. And so, in America, the Congress has voted against him, and some of our black brothers and sisters put their name on it because they don't understand. But they're making an example of Mugabe because in South Africa, it's worse. In Namibia, it's worse. In Botswana, AIDS is killing them in droves. 5,000 a week in Zimbabwe, 20,000 a month. I say to us, the land question will continue to be a driving force for the liberation of Africa, and unless America will join and England will join and say, "Wait a minute, the land question is valid." They don't want to take all the land back because the whites have built the country pretty well, so you offer them something for what they've done, but you can't have it all. I mean, that's fair. Black people are not heartless. There's a heart of mercy in black people. And it is that heart of mercy that we've gained from the furnace of affliction. We could never do to white people what they've done to us. We're just not that kind of people. But you can push us. I wouldn't advise you to do that. So in closing, in closing, dear brothers and sisters, I think the president is on I really don't think our president has considered what he's about to do. A preemptive strike on the assumption that there's a threat in Iraq would unleash the dogs of war all over the planet. America would have no more moral authority to say to Pakistan or India, "Don't you start and give a first strike." Here are two nations with weapons of mass destruction. They are really the same people, but they're divided by religion, Hindu and Muslim. And the hatred among them is so intense that when it is unleashed on one another, the violence is unbelievable. But Gandhi was able to lift Hindu and Muslim above their religious hatred to focus on the bigger picture. And unfortunately, now there's no bigger picture, so the hatreds and the intensity of that hatred is directed now at each other over Kashmir. China says, "Taiwan is mine." And Taiwan and America have a defense pact. You make a preemptive strike. What about China? You say you want a regime change in Iran, but you've already, in Iraq, but you've already named Iran and North Korea as a part of an axis of evil. So what are they thinking now? If you make a preemptive strike on Iraq, do you think that they don't think that they're next? So what are they to do? Are they not now to seek weapons of mass destruction too? China already has them, and I heard talk in Congress about a regime change in China. This government has gone mad, and when you allow, listen to me, when you allow insane people to lead you and you say nothing and do nothing, then you deserve the results of their insanity. Now, maybe, maybe as a black man, you don't think I should call a white man insane. Maybe as a black man, you should say, "Nikro, you should stay in your place." But you, as a white man, can't define my place anymore. Don't tell me I'm a defiant man. Farrakhan in a defiant speech. No, no, no. I'm not defying the president. The president is defying the people. Let the people vote. See if the people want war, but let the people know the truth, and then let the people have a referendum and see then if, if, if he can go to war. I'm not defiant. I'm just straightforward. I say to all of you, the fearful and the unbelieving will have their park in a lake that burns with fire. You have no reason to fear nothing or no one today but God. So I'm asking the American people to rise. All of the American people, white and black and brown, Muslim, Christian and Jew, agnostic and Buddhist and Hindu, whatever comprises the electorate in America, rise and not let madness destroy a great nation. Now, in conclusion, don't you think that America can't be had? I intend to say that. America, with spacious skies, by amber waves of grain, her purple mountain majesty above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee. Let's stop right there for a minute. What a nation this is. From the mid-Atlantic, mid-American states, enough grain to feed the whole world. Forty-nine states now under drought. In some states, there's a water shortage now. In other states, raging fires burning up millions of acres of timberland. Drought so heavy that rivers are drying up, leaving fish stinking on the banks and drying pots of mud. Cattle disease, fish disease, earth poison, and the worst is yet to come. You can't play with the prophets and their predictions. There will be wars and rumors of war. There would be famine and pestilence and earthquakes in diverse places, but this is just the beginning of sorrows. We're in it now. See, you can destroy other men, cities and towns, but with one earthquake, God can not only bring down the Trade Towers, he can level Detroit, level Chicago, level Los Angeles, level your country. You playing with a God that has power over you. And I, listen to me, I'm not a prophet, but I am a warning to America, to the government of America, that God is not asleep. Go ahead and attack Iraq. Go ahead and make yourself the policeman of the world, but remember the hand Sherrod is watching you, America, and greater nations than you have been leveled to nothing. So don't you put your trust in no weapons because a weapon can't save you today. Don't put your trust in government because government can't save you today. You better run and fly and seek refuge in God because there's no hiding place for nobody today. What this man and this government is about to unleash are the days of judgment. You can take it or leave it, but when I leave here today, you may not see me anymore because I know the enemy is planning for me. Yeah, he's planning. He don't only want a regime change over there. He wants a regime change over here. He not just thinking about a bullet that would take out Saddam. He's thinking about a bullet that will take out voices that he can't control. That's what they call Homeland Security. But as a man that in a few months will be 70 years old. I'm only concerned with how I leave Earth. I don't want to leave as a sniveling punk. I don't want to leave compromising the principles that made me who and what I am. I don't want to leave as a man in fear, trembling at the mighty power of America. I want to leave stronger than when I came in because it's not how you start your race, it's how you finish it. I don't know in what city I'm going to die or where I'm going to die, but I know that I shall. But when I take my last breath, I'm going to die a man. I'm going to die a man in service to God and a man in service to our people. What about you? That's your decision. Thank you for your, Assalamualaikum.
Keep the vote. Keep the vote. Keep the vote. All right. Thank you. Will everybody in Keep the Vote No Takeover please stand? I want everybody to see how wonderful this coalition is. Everybody, all right. All right. Minister Farrakhan, we are the warriors and the warriors of fighting in Detroit for the right to vote. The governor and the legislator took our right to vote over three years ago, and we have been fighting our right to vote for the school board. And the people that you see in this, right here with you now that support you are also supporting the right to vote. We are in federal court and going to the Supreme Court. Pray heartily for us because you know what we're up against. Today, we'd like to present to you, all of us that are here and the people in the audience that belong to Keep the Vote No Takeover, this poster, this is a commemorative poster of when we went to Cincinnati to fight for our right to vote. You can see some pictures of the people that are on this poster, and you see Martin Luther King, and it tells a story. This is the coalition. Our lawyer, Karen McPhail, is there pro bono, and the, the other lawyer is George Washington. And we want you to keep this in memory of what we're trying to do because we know that you're going to be here for a long time, and we're going to continue the struggle because we know it is righteous and God is on our side, and so are you. Thank you, my brother.
Did you hear him, Helen? He said, "Thank you very much." I only have two more presenters. I have the honorable, the wonderful, my sister Joanne Watson, representing Congressman John
Assalamualaikum. Our dear brother, a great leader, on behalf of the Honorable John Conyers, who is the Dean of the Congressional Black Caucus and ranking Democrat on the House Judiciary Committee, which if we do the right thing, he will become Chair of Judiciary and reparations, among other things, reparations, Ray Jenkins, will be coming out of committee onto the House floor. He's a native Detroiter. You're in his hometown, and he extends with all of his respect and all of his love and support, all the hospitality of the 14th Congressional District. To the Honorable Minister Louis Farrakhan, he wants to let you know that his office, his staff, his resources, and he is so grateful to you and the Honorable Barbara Rose Collins for the great leadership you brought to the Congressional Black Caucus, along with Alonzo W. Bates, City Councilman Bates, and all of those who made the special session on the Middle East and Africa a standout success this year at the CBC. God bless you, and he sent a special message from the House where they're engaging, as you know, in life and death conversation, doing his best to keep our people out of war. Thank you, Mr. Minister.
And next, I will bring greetings from our court. Which court, Helen? From Circuit Court, Judge Helen Brown.
I would like to say, I'm Judge Helen Brown. I'm from the Wayne County Circuit Court, and I serve on the Family Division. And I first met Minister Farrakhan in person 12 years ago for my first election, and he blessed my election at that time, and I'd like to thank you. I have served hard for the people of this county ever since, and I'm up for reelection this year like your blessing again. But I'm here to actually say, I want to thank you the most for the work that you are doing for families. I serve in the Family Division, and I divorce people and deal with custody issues all day long. Detroit has a 97% out-of-wedlock birth rate. Now, we know that Detroit has been in the forefront of movements from all of my life. We have brought the Motown sound. We have brought the First March before the March on Washington with Martin Luther King. We have brought so much to this country, and we can do this again, but as long as we have an out-of-wedlock birth rate like we have, and a divorce rate like we have, and a poverty rate like we have, and men making babies and walking away, and women walking away because you don't do me right, we... we, as long as we have these circumstances, we're gonna have trouble and will not be able to raise our children the way they need to be. Minister Farrakhan, you have brought a message to families in Detroit that is so important. And I would like to ask each and every one of you who is here today to take a pledge that you will be a strong family person, that you will value your family, that you will honor your husband, that you will honor your wife, that you will stop having sex out of wedlock and stop making babies out of wedlock, and do right and live a moral life. Listen to the minister as he gives warnings because this city is on the verge of some trouble that's not even on the radar screen. And if we're gonna stand up and be strong and do what he tells us to do, we have to start taking care home. Thank you so much for your message. God bless you.
A true judge of the people. In the Bible, the judges just didn't sit on a bench. They were amongst the people. And now, representing the mayor's office, Mr. Darrell Redman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Collins, to Minister Farrakhan. Thank you so much, Minister, for blessing us with your presence in the city. This morning, when you came in to meet with the mayor, and I listened as you shared with all of us. I'm so proud and honored that you've come and graced us and blessed us with your anointing God has given you. I'm glad also to represent Mayor Kwame Kilpatrick, who's not afraid, who's not afraid to meet with you and bring you within chambers, as some mayors are. And they will go unnamed. He's not afraid to say, "I recognize who you are and what you are and what you bring to us. You are a gift to us, not just our people, but all people. You are making a difference, not only in this world, but in this city." And I believe, Minister Farrakhan, as a minister myself, that Detroit will take hold of the words that you've given us on today. And you will see a resounding effect and change from the people. Where there is no vision, the people will perish. Thank you for your vision. Thank you for your truth. Thank you for being a man of God. God bless you.
And finally, we will have, by the way, the mayor is preparing a proclamation. It just wasn't prepared in time to present it to you, but Mr. Redman will get that to you when it's completed. And Mr. Paul Taylor, representing the Million Man Alumni, has asked for one minute, 60 seconds.
60 seconds, thank you. Giving honor to the City Council and giving special honor to Mr. Barbara Rose Collins. It's an honor and a privilege to be here in the midst of such a great man as Minister Louis Farrakhan. Your vision, your wisdom was the inspiration for the creation of the Million Man March, which spurned the other million marches and created the Million Man Alumni. So we owe a debt of gratitude to you. We love you, we respect you, and we offer an open invitation to you to come back to the Inner City Subcenter, 7 o'clock, any and every Thursday night. You are more than welcome to be there in our membership. And we offer that same challenge, and I do say challenge, brothers, to all of us as black men who took the pledge on which our organization is founded upon. We need you to come out, brothers, on Thursday night. Calling all brothers, 7 o'clock, Thursday night, Inner City Subcenter. And next Wednesday is the Holy Day of Atonement, the anniversary of the Million Man March. And we need to be there because we have to stand up as this brother is standing up and stand up for our women, our community, our children, and our future. Calling all brothers, let's stand up and be counted.
And finally, because I'm the chair of the day, I have the final word. The minister has said, and this is this is the second time I've heard him say it, he believes his life is in danger because of the Homeland Security Division. We know that that's not just saying it. We know that a country that can kill President John F. Kennedy, Martin Luther King, Malcolm X, is a country that can slay Minister Louis Farrakhan. But my pledge to you is if I'm in the vicinity, I will willingly stand as a shield before you, Minister. I say this with love and devotion, and I mean it from the bottom of my heart because we are so honored to have you just walk the pavements of the city of Detroit. And I would hope every last one of us would lay down our lives to protect you, Minister. You are a gift from God. Thank you, and God bless you. I would like to ask the audience to remain until after the minister leaves. And you are not to use this door at all. You have to use the main doors through the, at the back of the auditorium. But would you please remain seated until after the minister leaves? Would you please remain seated? Please sit down until after the minister leaves. Down.